Welcome to the combined work session regular meeting for August 2019. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, we're going to have a moment of silence for Walter Breslin, who served faithfully as a school board director for many years on this board and passed away on July 25th. The second item on the work session agenda is the alcohol awareness grant presentation by the Upper Darby Police Department, Lou Gentile.
So, my name's Lou Gentile. I oversee the Public Safety and Security Department for the district. With me tonight is Captain Louis Panagopoulos, an Upper Darby grad, and Sergeant Anthony Vaughn, and Officer Mike Scott. Earlier this year, Captain Panagopoulos came to us with a grant opportunity that he was going to try for referencing alcohol awareness for our students when it comes to impaired driving, et cetera. So, he knows the grant better than me. I figure I'll turn it over to Captain Panagopoulos and he can explain exactly what this entails.
Thank you for having us here. We realize that you do important work and will be as quick as possible. The Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board fund programs that focus on proven strategies to discourage and reduce both underage and dangerous drinking. The Upper Darby Township Police Department has put together a framework for a program and received funding in the continued effort to educate our youth and ensure that they are aware of the consequences of underage drinking. Clearly, teens are particularly vulnerable to alcohol use. Many teens are coping with stress in their daily lives. In fact, life-changing events can be an influencing factor in the use of alcohol. The goal of this program is to inform and create an awareness among teens at a time when they will be exposed to the availability of alcohol and, in many cases, will have the added responsibility of acquiring a driver's license. Keep in mind, according to Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, car crashes are the leading cause of death for teenagers and one-fourth of those wrecks involve an underage-drinking driver. Moreover, consider this stat: the number of teens that get into a vehicle with someone who has been drinking is considerably higher. Twenty-one percent of teens admit to climbing into a vehicle with an impaired driver. Let alone, alcohol-related crashes are the leading cause of death for people 15 to 24 years of age. Accordingly, our goal is to educate the student body and create an awareness of the effects of being impaired, but at the same time, do so in a way that they will enjoy and that hopefully will have a lasting impact. There are two parts to this program: a slide presentation and a practical exercise. First, Officer Scott will speak about the slide presentation.
For the pilot program, we thought would be 10th grade students. Okay, they're either R-16 or turning 16 and getting their driver's license during that school year. Speaking with the school earlier on, health and gym classes would probably be used. We wouldn't want to take away from academic classes to teach this. The first part would be a presentation. The part of the presentation would be short but to the point, okay? We would talk to the kids about the statistics of fatalities and injuries incurred during DUI accidents. We'd also talk about local statistics as far as right here in Upper Darby where the kids can connect with it. The number of DUIs we have, the number of fatalities, the number of underage DUIs, the number of underage drinking arrests that we make just within the township, so they can really connect with those stats. And probably, most of them can either connect to someone they know who has been involved in a situation like that. Secondly, we'll discuss the effects of the consumption of alcohol in the brain and the reduced academic performance within that. And really talk to the kids about the laws. A lot of the kids at this age either don't care or just don't know the laws for, one, underage drinking, the consequences of underage drinking if you're arrested, and what you have to go through. And the DUI laws, most kids don't know that the DUI law for underage kids, being under 21, not allowed to consume alcohol, is very low tolerance. Basically, if you consume any alcohol and drive a vehicle, more than likely, you're above the legal limit for DUI for under 21. So, the classroom part would be probably shorter than the practical. We just really want to hit the key points and statistics that the kids will remember for if they ever encounter themselves or, like the captain said, getting into a car with someone who may be impaired. It's just not them driving themselves. It's recognizing when maybe an adult family member or friend is impaired and going to get behind the wheel of a car, that they can recognize that to maybe stop them or at least knock it in the car themselves. Sergeant Vaughn talked about the practical part.
Students will be afforded the opportunity to operate a golf cart at low speed through a course, isolated and secure. So, what that means is, we acquire the golf cart, just regular golf cart, you know, off the golf course, but we have it regulated, so it isn't going to go fast. I don't know exactly, eight to 10, I think we said?
I'm not sure.
Eight to 10 miles an hour or something like that. And also, we have a kill switch in case somebody's, you know, not taking it seriously, we can shut the golf cart down immediately.
So, there's a person going to be in the car?
Police officer in the car on the passenger side of the car, and the team will be driving the golf cart through an obstacle off cones and stop signs. Now, you said, how does that affect, you know, how would that affect, would it be like underage drinking? There's goggles that the teams will be wearing that would simulate what it would look like if you were driving while impaired. This exercise will allow students to stimulate the operation of a vehicle after consuming alcohol. With that, we also are going to do a, I'm sure everybody's seen, you know, on the news or on YouTube or whatever, a regular field sobriety test. So, when the police pull you over, get out of the car, if we feel like you're impaired, we'll give you a series of tests, okay? Your simple test, heel to toe, touch your nose, everybody knows about that. They would also do that with the simulators on, just to give them the effects of having alcohol in their system and having to perform these tests. Providing this experience would be helpful to instill the lesson that alcohol greatly impairs a person's balance, vision, reaction, time, and judgment. Again, between the tests and the golf cart, these kids will realize what it is to try to judge that turn, try to come up to that stop sign with portable stop signs we can put out, try to come up to that stop sign. If a kid ran out in front of you, how long would it take to stop? This simulates all these things, and what we're trying to do is not sit there and lecture the students, but to show them, to demonstrate, and actually let them get behind the wheel and feel what it would be like, because this is a serious, serious thing. As the captain said, most of the desk between 15 and 24 are from drinking and driving. Is there any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this practical exercise, would students be given the option to complete it, or would every student complete it?
That's going to have to be up to the school. I mean, the police aren't going to make anybody do anything they don't want to if they don't feel comfortable.
Sorry, I wasn't sure about that.
Yeah, no, we're not going to, I mean, if somebody tells me, hey, I don't feel comfortable driving this, I'm certainly going to let them. All right, well then, how about you watch?
In our conversation, I want to compliment these three leaders in the community for reaching out to us. I know you guys are passionate, all three of you are passionate about this work. You've come to us in the past about the heroin epidemic and holding forums here, Sergeant Vaughn, so I appreciate that. Neil, to answer your question, we're going to start small. We're going to start small with this program, with a small group of students, see how it goes from there, and then work on how it ties into the curriculum at the high school anyway, as far as teaching and this awareness, and build it from there. When I was approached by Captain Panagopoulos for this grant, we wrote it, and I think the money funds the police, the cart and the goggles. And then the training and how we develop this moving forward, we're still in the beginning stages of how that fleshes out. We're going to start small and then go from there. We're not going to force every student to go through it.
Several components that you described, the presentation, which is the learning and education part, the writing part, was the total number of hours that were in? How long was it total? What number of hours?
We're hoping to get a class done within one block.
Okay.
Okay, so we would certainly have everything set off prior to. I mean, I'm not going to take the school's time while we're setting up the cone course and tenting out stop signs and stuff. We would have everything set off in there, and then, just like we did here, classroom, maybe 15 minutes, giving the stats, talking to the kids, and then bringing them outside, and then we kind of split up into two groups. We had a couple more officers, and we split up into two groups to show them the field sobriety with the goggles on, and then while the other group could be actually operating the golf cart. There's one thing I know, it's that this school time is valuable. Like superintendent said, we did a no presentation, and we had it down pretty well to science, right? It's like one block, and we got everybody thrilled, you know, the entire student body. Yes, sir.
I understand that this is a positive program and bringing alcohol awareness, and I want to thank you guys for doing it because it's greatly needed for the community. But the expansion of marijuana laws that are going to be coming in, a lot of the kids here, their substance of choice isn't primarily alcohol, it's marijuana, it's these purpose sets, it's these pills, it's that nature. Will this program expand in the future to combat some of these other issues that are in our teens' lives right now?
They have goggles that reflect those individual drugs, so we can actually go out and purchase marijuana goggles.
Right.
And supposedly these goggles simulate, you know, your vision, your reaction time, your balance, actually also, it changes how much that you can actually say, buy goggles for drinking, drink two, drink five, so you have goggles that do all these different things. And I didn't look into the marijuana goggles.
Right.
I'm sure they have, and that's something that we could expand on.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vaughn.
Correct. Yeah, this is again, the beginning of this, this grant was, I think about $10,000 was that? $16,000 was the initial grant. We were hopeful to get it, and then we're going to look to expand even more conversations about heroin and everything else. We've been having those conversations back and forth, even as a community, because Upper Darby is a large community, working with the police to develop our own programs together, and that's something we're kicking around moving forward, thanks to these three gentlemen, really, who brought it forward to the district. So, this is going to start out, and then we'll bring out how we flesh it out moving forward. But we are really going to start with a very small group of students and see how it goes from there as our initial stage.
I said, that was a great question. Yeah, we have problems with marijuana, like everybody does, and that's definitely something we need to check into.
Thank you, thank you.
It's a great question.
I would just like to thank you for bringing this to our school, and actually, and I like the fact that you're keeping it local and you're going to deal with local statistics. Officer Scott, you look very familiar to me because I probably have one of the biggest party places in the back of my house, and the kids just don't understand the impact. And a lot of them do get behind the wheel, which is really scary, so I think starting locally and explaining that is really important, so thank you.
If I could touch on that, now, you've got to remember, if the kid gets behind the wheel, he can get killed, he or she can get killed, the passengers can get killed, whatever other car he or she hits can get killed. Twice of us are a big problem. I mean, they don't, these drunk drivers can't save them. So, it's not just, you know, it's like a snowball effect, you know? We might stop one child from getting behind a wheel, let's say countless lives, so that's the way I think about it.
Thank you for putting this great program together. Any other comments or questions from the board? Thank you, gentlemen, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School Board, School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 6:10 until 7:35 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by the Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel litigation matters. Roll call, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Here.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Dr. Rucci?
Here.
Dr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Curry?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. Dr. Rucci and Ms. Mitchell are both excused. Approval of the minutes, Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting of July 9, 2019, are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public, and move for its adoption this evening.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Motion carried. Approval of the report of the secretary, Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Vote, please.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of the report of the secretary, Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public, and I move for its adoption this evening.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Would you poll the board, please?
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Motion carried. Report of the treasurer, Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public, and I move for its adoption this evening.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll the board, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Motion carried. Budgeted personnel and enrollment reports. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public, and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. Now, we will have the report of the superintendent by Dr. McGary.
Good evening, Vice President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of Upper Darby School District. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the administrative team, central office staff, principals, transportation department, maintenance department, and Udespa for the work they are currently doing to make sure our schools will be prepared for our teachers on August 20, 2019, and our students on August 26, 2019. Parents and guardians should have received their back-to-school mailings already via our Parent Link systems. Bus assignments and schedules will be mailed home on August 15. Student schedules and other information are already available through our Home Access Center. If you're struggling as a community member to get access to your student schedule information, please reach out to your school principals, and they should allow you, provide you the passwords to get into Home Access Center. Today, in this very room, we welcomed our new teachers to the district during our first day of new teacher orientation. I would like to thank Ms. Christine Kelly for organizing the first day of new teachers. It's a big undertaking, and she collaborates with Dr. Counsel's Office, but a great job today, Christine, and the teachers that were here were eager and excited, awesome kickoff to the beginning of the opening of our schools. Tomorrow, and on August 15, district elementary, middle, and high school teams will be receiving professional development on restorative practices. This is another exciting initiative we have put into place in order to better support our staff and students. On August 20, 2019, at 7:00 PM, Mr. Salerno, the Director of Elementary Education, will be leading a forum with residents on the proposed plans for renovating and expanding our own elementary school. We will also be holding a meeting with district home and school presidents on August 22nd, I'm sorry, at 6:30 PM in the boardroom to review the work we have completed this summer and to discuss plans for the 2019-2020 school year. So, again, as a reminder, on August 22, we'll be meeting with home and school leaders and presidents to discuss what we're working on this summer and have worked on, and to discuss the opening of our schools. We're also so excited to start this new school year. We have so many wonderful initiatives underway and multiple facilities improvements. We are hopeful still that our new track and turf field will be ready for the first football game. We have run into some bad weather the last week, and future poor weather may prevent us from that August 23 goal, but we are tentatively planning to hold the game on August 23. We will make an announcement this week. If there is further rain or storms, it will delay us in putting that turf field in, and we've contacted Bonner about that, but we'll make that known. We are tentatively planning to hold a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new field and track prior to the first Central League game on September 20. So, we're really excited, looking forward to hosting a big kickoff to the new track and field on September 20. More information will follow. In March, when I was announced as the superintendent of schools, I shared goals for the district. Our plan over the next several years will be to do the following: recruit and retain the best staff, as we saw this morning; provide a multitude of learning opportunities for the students we serve; promote and celebrate a unified, diverse school community; refocus our attention on elementary school programming so that our young students develop a meaningful educational foundation; identify students' strengths and develop pathways toward graduation; improve communication internally and externally; improve our learning facilities so they become points of pride in our community; promote excellence in and out of the classroom; and empower our students to take pride in our schools and community in order to promote a positive school, climate, and culture. This summer, Upper Darby High School Principal, Mrs. Simone, provided me a book to read. She and her administrative team attended a summer professional development by Eric Jensen on his book, "Engaging Students with Poverty in Mind." It is an excellent read with several important reminders and takeaways. Jensen refers to five actions to create positive classrooms, and I would add, there are five ways to create a positive school district and overall community. The five actions are: raise the bar, regardless of poverty or regardless of the circumstances, have high expectations of one another and of our students; manage mind and body states; be aware of how we interact with each other, how we interact with our students, and our positive interactions will allow our students to have positive results academically; establish that we are a family, we are in this together as a school district, as a family, so all of our wants and our needs and desires have to come together to be the same; sustain emotional positivity, and teach, teach positive social and emotional responses. Over the next several months, we will continue to engage in conversations about improvements of our facilities, our academic expectations, our forms of communication, and our focus on helping every child, every child, in this district achieve. Jensen's book reaffirmed why I became an educator. It is not the latest and greatest technology or a new curriculum that makes a difference in a school district, rather is the people. We are the single most important influence in the lives of the children and communities we serve. If we come together and work toward the same goals, we will change the narrative about public schools in this country. Vice President Brown and members of the board, this concludes my superintendent's report for this evening.
Next are the committee meeting summaries. We will now have an update on the July 23, 2019 Education and People's Services Committee meeting. Mrs. Curry will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on board docs.
Thank you, Vice President, Mr. Vice President. Our Education and People's Services Committee meeting that took place on Tuesday, July 23, 2019, here is a review of the summary. Number one, we had a trauma-informed care 2018-2019 review informational. The 2019-2020 plan and contract where board action is required this evening. Dr. Greg Manfree and Mr. Frank Salerno presented the work completed this year in our secondary and elementary schools with Lakeside Neurological on Trauma-Informed Care. In addition, the plan for the 2019-2020 school year was presented with a focus on school-based coaching, including observations, support, feedback to the district staff. This item correlates to Goal 1, Goal 4, and Goal 5 of the UDSD Comprehensive Plan. Number 2, Stop the Violence Grant Partnership with the DCIU, which was informational. Mr. Edward Marshallak presented a three-year grant partnership with the DCIU focusing on creating a trauma-sensitive school. The district will focus on our work at the high school with select members of the school-based team. During the 2019-2020 school year, professional development with staff from the DCIU will be provided to the school-based team. This item was informational and correlates to Goal 1, Goal 4, Goal 5 of the UDSD Comprehensive Plan. Number 3, Elementary School Youth Court, which was also informational. Mr. Frank Salerno discussed the expansion of the district's youth court program in two of the elementary schools. Stonehurst Hills and Garreford Elementary Schools will be the sites for youth court during the 2019-2020 school year. Currently, the youth court class is offered at all of our secondary schools. This item was informational and correlates to Goal 1 of the UDSD Comprehensive Plan. Number 4, NWEA Measure of Academic Progress MAP Annual Growth Review was informational. Mrs. Christine Kelly presented the 2018-2019 district map data. The presentation highlighted growth data from the school year and areas of focus for the 2019-2020 school year. The item was informational and correlates to Goal 2 and Goal 3 of the UDSD Comprehensive Plan. Number 5, Elementary Science STEM Resources. Board action is required this evening. Mrs. Christine Kelly presented the integration of STEM into the elementary classrooms. The presentation included the recommendation to adopt teacher resources, the cost, and the professional development plan for implementation. These resources will be funded through the legislative educational grants granted to the district last school year. This item required board action and correlates to Goal 2, Goal 3, and Goal 6 of the UDSD Comprehensive Plan. And lastly, number 6, the policies. Board action is required this evening. A Policy 150 Title I Comparability of Services. This policy has been revised to include a statement describing the method of determination for school entities to demonstrate compliance. B, Policy 220 Student Expression Distribution and Posting of Materials. This policy language has been revised to include electronic posting of materials to update language throughout the policy from maintenance of order in the school environment to safety and order. C, Policy 239 Foreign Exchange Students. This policy has been updated to include approval of students into the district is at the discretion of the superintendent. And D, Policy 335 Family and Medical Leaves. The policy has been revised to clarify paid leave runs concurrent with FMLA leave. There were no public comments at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. We will now have an update on the July 23, 2019 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Dr. Taylor will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on board docs.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice President. There were two agenda items on our Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Agenda item number 1 was a facilities update, so this was informational. Marvin Lee provided an update on major projects completed during the 2018-2019 school year and discussed the current maintenance projects that will be completed before the beginning of the 2019-2020 school year. This item correlates to Goal number 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. The current maintenance projects are broken into the following categories: so we have public announcement system, fire alarm system, floor, masonry, playground equipment upgrades, major renovations, and then others. Agenda item number 2 were policies, and this item is going to require board action. There were two policies that were reviewed: Policy 609, which is investment of district funds, and Policy 702.1, which is crowdfunding. There was one public comment regarding Policy 702.1. Thank you.
The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public and move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
I have one comment. Policy 239 Foreign Exchange Students. I know during the committee meeting, we had talked about the terminology that was being used at the discretion of the superintendent, that that should be explained more thoroughly in that policy. So I'm just wondering where we stand with that.
First readings, but I will tell you that it went back to a first reading because it required substantial changes.
And sorry, you've been updating the between yesterday and today, so that the language of policy has been changed from that at the discretion of the district.
Are there any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. Motion carries. The Personnel Report, Dr. Taylor.
The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
Okay, so first, to all of our retirees, thank you for your years of service to the district. We wish you a happy and restful retirement. I also want to welcome to the district our new teachers who started today, along with Mr. Timothy Lambert, the district's new manager of data and information. And I would also like to congratulate Eileen Hirschman on her new position in the district.
(applause).
Can we have, I think Tim is here. Can we have Tim stand up and say hello and so we can know who he is? And I think Eileen is here as well. Can she stand up? We can acknowledge her.
Thank you.
No? Okay. Poll vote. My apologies.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we can do the policy report. Mr. Days Noiers.
So the policies under first reading tonight are... 003 Bog One, Board Policy Development Process. 005 Bog, and Bog is Board Organization Guidelines. 005 Bog Organization. 005 Bog Two, Committee of the Whole. 005 Bog Three, Functions of the Committee as a Whole. Functions of Committee of the Whole. And so all of those, those four items are being revised to create a standing policy committee that will meet monthly with the other two committee meetings that currently meet. Education and People's Services and Finance and Operations. And those committee meetings are usually on the fourth Tuesday of each month. So these changes are being made so that an entire meeting will be devoted to discussing proposed changes and additions and deletions of policy. Policy 239 Foreign Exchange Students went through a first reading last month, at last month's board meeting, and was discussed at last month's committee meeting on July 23. It has, the policy has undergone substantial changes since then. That the approval of foreign exchange students at the discretion of the superintendent has been removed and has been replaced by requirements that foreign exchange students who enroll in the district must be in the U.S. on a J1 visa and must be part of a sponsoring program, and that sponsoring program must have to meet, has to meet certain criteria. So because of those significant changes, Policy 239 is going through a first reading again and will have to go through a second reading at the September board meeting before being adopted. Policy 810 and 810.1 Transportation and Drug Alcohol Testing Covered Drivers, and also Policy 810.3 School Vehicle Drivers are being updated to clarify the qualifications that professional drivers for the district must meet and the requirements, the ongoing requirements they must meet to continue driving for the district. And that is, those are the policies under first reading, and I apologize if I left something out. My laptop's not cooperating and I can't access my notes on this.
Okay, I think you got them all. No votes required because those policies are in the first reading, so you have a list for second reading, right?
Okay. So, my laptop decided to work. So, are we at second reading yet?
Yes.
Okay. So, the policy report is in the hands for each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
Yes, I have some comments. The policies going through second reading this evening have undergone a first reading in a prior board meeting, but those policies are Policy 150 Comparability of Services. There are minor updates to clarify the policy. Policy 220 Student Expression Distribution and Posting of Materials. Significant changes to clarify items and actions covered under the policy and clarify the intent of the policy. Policy 335, and I should mention that on the policy second reading report posted to Board Docs, on the first page, the policy number is listed incorrectly. It's listed as Policy 355. The correct policy itself is included further down the document, but that is a typo. The policy undergoing second reading this evening is Policy 335, not 355. This is covering family and medical leaves, and it's being changed to indicate that employees who use the Family and Medical Leave Act must utilize any paid leave concurrently with Family and Medical Leave Act leave. Policy 609 Investment of District Funds. There are substantial updates to the policy to better define various investment options and clarify the types of investments in which the district may invest. And Policy 702.1 Crowdfunding. This policy is being implemented to ban the use of crowdfunding by district employees. This policy simply encodes in policy a ban that already exists in administrative regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Days Noiers. I just have a question, the one that has the typo. Is that going to be corrected? Are you going to make sure that gets corrected?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the board?
Second reading.
Yes.
So I just want to reiterate with the second reading for the crowdfunding process that, as it was talked about, and President Mitchell also spoke about it in the committee meeting, that the teachers in the district, still, there's underfunding, and the teachers are trying to figure out ways to fund their classrooms. And so I just want to reiterate the fact that we are severely underfunded and that the crowdfunding has provided for children in the past, understanding that many of the items that are purchased, or it is my understanding that many of the items that are purchased can't be necessarily regulated. It still feels like a loss, and so I just want to continue to reiterate that we need to find ways to help the teachers to manage the cost in the classroom that isn't managed by funds.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
Suzanne Britis, 319 Austin Drive. I would like to also echo Ms. Curry's concerns. Many of the crowdfunding requests that I have seen have been related to the trauma-informed care, calming corners and things of that. So I feel like if we bring these programs that are needed to our school district that are going to help our children, we should make sure that the teachers aren't prohibited from looking for resources to implement these things in a way that's going to be effective for our students. So I feel like we should probably look for a way to address any specific concerns through the policy rather than across the board just saying no, because ultimately, the students are going to be the ones that are going to pay the price for this decision. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Poll vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers? Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye, with barring of the crowdfunding.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. Motion carries. The Supplies Report.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public, and I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. Motion carries. The Facilities Reports. Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Facilities Report and the Appended Report, the Use of Facilities Report and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public, and I move for their adoption this evening.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. Motion carries. The Finance and Budget Report. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote, please, Mr. Rogers.
Ms. Gentile?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, that brings us to our collateral assignment reports. We will begin with the Delaware County Community College. Mrs. Jordan? Thank you.
I have two announcements today from the DCIU. First, our early Head Start and Head Start are actively recruiting children and families from birth to age five. If you're interested, please visit the website to apply at DCIU.org. There are still spots open. And second, let's see. In response to the National Substitute Teacher Shortage Crisis, DCIU is offering a Guest Teacher Program service as an effort to assist participating districts with obtaining substitute teachers on a daily basis. The Guest Teacher Program is designed to provide individuals with limited or no teaching experience with the necessary training required to become day-to-day substitutes. Any individual with a bachelor's degree in any content area from an accredited university is eligible to apply to participate in the program. Upon completion of the program, participants will receive an emergency permit used by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, enabling them to substitute in any participating district and Career Technical Institute on a day-to-day basis. If you're interested in applying to this program, the next training for this, it's a two-day full-day training, so it's from eight to five both days. It'll be September 5th and 6th, and you can go and apply on DCIU.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. The Legislative Council Report. Mr. Fields?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Legislative council doesn't meet during the summer, so there's no actual Legislative Council report. There are a couple of things of interest from a legislative perspective. Today, Governor Wolf announced that he's using executive action to make changes to the charter school law. Okay? I did this in Allentown. Highlights include allow school districts to limit the student enrollment at charters that do not provide high-quality equitable education to students. Require transparent charter school admission and enrollment policies that do not discriminate based on intellectual or athletic ability, race, ethnicity, gender, or disability, among other student characteristics. Is going to require charters to accurately document their costs, because ultimately, we are the ones that pay those costs, so we're going to have those documented more transparently. And prevent charters from overcharging districts and taxpayers for the educational services they provide. I cannot believe this is something that they're actually able to do. There's a few other items there as well. It's a good first step. I'm sure there will be some back and forth on some of the changes, but as I said, it's a good first step. It's a step in the right direction, so I'm glad to see the governor's doing that. State Senator Pat Brown, and he's in Lehigh County. In addition to what the governor's doing, he is calling for a special session to review charter school funding. Specifically, a special session on charter school funding to allow for complete and comprehensive dialogue regarding the challenges with how we currently fund charter schools. Hopefully, these reviews and special sessions will result in changes to better support our public schools. I have a few copies of both these announcements up here. If you want to take a look, take one home if anybody's interested. I've also asked that the administration put on the district website a link to an article that discusses the governor's plans. More importantly, in this article, there's access to a database that allows you to search by county and school district so that you can see what each district is paying to charter schools. For Delaware County, the top three, Upper Darby, Penwood, Chester-upland. Okay? It's frustrating and infuriating that the districts with some of the most significant poverty and some of the most at-risk kids are the ones that are being, taking advantage of with this charter school funding. It's just, it's intolerable. If you're wondering, Upper Darby's paying eight million a year between brick and mortar and cyber charter schools. So, and then Chester-upland, it's insane what they're paying. So that, a link to this article and that database will be on the website at some point at the end of the week, and there's two copies there if you want to take a look. And that is my legislative report.
The Mendon Hall Tyson Scholarship Committee Report.
Well, the scholarships were given in May, and this is the month where our scholars are now enrolling in their various colleges. In fact, that's why Mrs. Mitchell is not here tonight. She is down in Louisiana.
LSU.
Yep, LSU, with her daughter, getting her involved with her new life. So I just, for all of those out there who are beginning, our Upper Darby grads, who are beginning their next step in life, I just hope they can hear the vibes, how happy we are and how proud of them we are, and we just wish them the best. And of course, that includes our Mendelson Tyson Award winners who are absolutely fabulous. And of course, that includes our Mendelson Tyson Award winners, who are absolutely fabulous. So, so happy.
Thank you very much. Well said, Mrs. Gentile. Home and School, Mrs. Jordan.
Sure that the first meeting will take place next week on the 22nd at 6:30.
Policy Committee, Mr. Des Noiers.
The Board and the Administration are making progress moving to establish a standing Policy Committee, as I mentioned earlier, and as is reflected in some of the updates going through a first reading this evening. So, the updates regarding, the policy updates regarding establishing a standing Policy Committee will be discussed further at this month's, sorry, at, yes, at this month's committee meeting, which if I'm correct, is Tuesday, August 27. And we welcome feedback from the, from the community on the plan to establish a standing Policy Committee at the committee meeting on August 27. And the changes in tonight's documents, if it is decided on the 27th that substantial changes are needed from what was presented tonight, those policies can go back to a first reading then in September. Otherwise, if no further changes are needed, the changes reflected tonight will undergo a second reading in September at the Board Meeting, and the Standing Policy Committee will be created.
I have a PSBA update. President Mitchell and I will be attending a leadership workshop conducted by PSBA in September that focuses on getting new school board members acclimated to school board and making sure they have a smooth transition. So, we're looking forward to getting smarter and doing our jobs even better as leaders of the Board. Let's see. Communication. Dr. Taylor and Mrs. Jordan, anything?
Okay. Any other reports on collateral assignments? I think we covered everything. All right, now we're going to move on to old business. Mr. Fields, I think you had something.
This happened a couple of weeks ago. A shout-out to Summer Stage. The Upper Darby Performing Arts Center Summer Stage was rated as Best of the Main Line for Children's Theater. We're the main line! All right! Look at us! This was a Reader's Choice Award, which means that the community, this community, came out in a big way to support this program and recommend them for this. So, tip of the hat to Mr. Dietzler and to everybody in the program, I think Gerleene as well. There was a big event at Drexel Brook that they attended as one of the winners of this Best of the Main Line Award, and it was really, it was great for this community to be showcased at such an event in such a nice way. It was really, really something. A neighbor had given me a ticket, so I got to go, and I ran into some other people there as well. So it was, it was really good. So again, hats off to the Performing Arts Center and the Summer Stage Program. One more thing, my youngest participated in their fifth-grade program, and it just, well, he told me I have to get him an agent. So, and for Christmas, he wants an audition, which I don't know how you wrap that, but it just, it brought so much out of him. It was just really amazing. So it's a great program. If you haven't participated, really look into it. It is really something unique and special to Upper Darby, and it's really great. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fields. Any other old business? All right. New business. Mr. Rogers.
I'd just like to bring up a, more of a public service announcement for our taxpayers. We recently became aware of an issue at the Delaware County Board of Assessments, which provide all the property information for all of the Delaware County homeowners and districts to issue their tax bills. They had transitioned into a new software program, and it seems as though they may have had some issues with the transition and some data not transferring properly. What that all means is it's potential that a taxpayer's bill could have went to the, an improper address. We're looking into it on our end. I know that all of the districts in the county are, are doing the same, each experiencing different issues. We're working through them the best we can. We just want to make sure that people are aware. Check for your bill. If you have not received it, please contact our tax office. We'll be more than happy to issue another copy of your bill. If you don't receive your bill, it is not a valid excuse for not paying your taxes. So this is more of an announcement that if you have not received your bill, please contact our office immediately.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers. Dr. McGarry, I think you had something.
I just received information from a neighboring superintendent who represents superintendents in Delaware County on a committee, and from Ridley School District, Lee Wenzel provided me an update that obviously when IDEA went into law in 1975, it was supposed to be funded at 40%. And we hover around between, you know, 18% to 14% annually. So it's supposed to be funded at 40% at a federal level, and it's around 18% to 14%. The U.S. House of Representatives have introduced HR 1878 to fully fund IDEA. The bill has 113 cosponsors from both parties to increase IDEA funding to 40% as promised in 1975 over a 10-year period. So I'm being told that the NSBA and PSBA are advocating for this bill, and then on Wednesday, August 21st, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at William Tennant High School in Centennial School District in Warmester, the PA group that's representing and sponsoring this bill will be there to hear from people, and we're going to try to make an effort to be there, and I just wanted the Board and the public to know that this sounds very promising. If this goes through, that dollar amount, that substantial increase to 40% funding IDEA for the school district would be significant, significant support. So I wanted to share that information, Vice President Brown, so I appreciate you allowing me to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGarry. That's very important. What was that HR number? What was it?
HR 1878.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Any other new business? Okay. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby residents who signed in to address the Board in the order in which they signed in. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. First name is Dal Graham. Brian Taylor. Okay? Richard Bly.
My name is Rich Bly. I'm from Attica, the 6th District at 274 Kent Road. Seated here is my son. Seated here is members from tailor-made veterans. Seated here are community members that are from the 6th. First of all, I want to say a couple of things. I know that it's just the statement section. We will be back for the question section later on. But the reason why I've come to the school board is because I've heard you, Doctor, talk about diversity, and I keep talking about this diversity piece in Upper Darby, and I'm going to say it one more time. Diversity does not exist. Diversity is when all people work together for one common goal together. And what I see, from where I stand, it's still individuals working individually, not for a common goal. I am the holder of the Juneteenth Proclamation here in Upper Darby Township. It is my quest and my goal to get that curriculum taught in these schools. The true history of the people who are from the ancestry of slavery will be taught. If you will not teach it, my son will. I will put it in this school. It will be taught. It will be talked about. It will be addressed. We will be talking about it. You need to not be afraid of it. You need to bring it forward. The true history of our people will be told. It will be. You don't have a choice. It's a state law, number one. Number two, in one to five years, it's going to be a national holiday. Those efforts are being made by me and other people to bring it forward. So you can't escape it. You're not going to escape it. I'm not going to let you. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is this Act 67, and I'm here to bring you a message from the mayor. And the mayor says, and I quote, "If you go ahead and arm your security detail, the Upper Darby police will not be coming. If you need a bomb disposal, you will create your own. If you're going to go ahead without consulting with him or giving him a phone call to have a conversation about this, about public safety, you are on your own. When you do call him, it will be a push of the button from the principal, and then he will come and take it over." I'm just passing on the message, because I have a problem with the fact that we don't get true information until it leaks out the day of. That's a problem. There are a lot of people who don't know what you guys are doing and how you're doing it, and I'm here to speak about it, and I have to be very forthright with you, and I have to come very directly, because when I have conversations with Don Fields about different things and how I feel, and he tells me that he's the low man on the totem pole, and that he can't get you guys together to have a simple conversation, a simple meeting, it upsets me. When I make a phone call to Mr. Brown, and those calls don't get answered, and I don't get conversations back, that's a problem for me, because my son's going to be a senior, and he's my last child, and it's very important for me to make sure that I get him ready and completed and be successful in life past me. So, again, I'm going to extend, I'm going, I'm going to finish this. I'm going to extend another invitation in September for you to come to a committee meeting that I will be having at Pastor Nate Goodson's church to talk about Juneteenth and how there is going to be a parade in the township, by the way. There's going to be one, and how the school board is going to help implement that. Thank you very much.
Olivia Taylor, 204 Kent Road. This is my first time speaking at a school board meeting, mainly because my daughter graduated years ago, and I am so glad she did, because she does not have to be subjected to you all. This Act 67, I thought was done with last year when we had a roomful of people who spoke against it. I get that we had two mass shootings about a week and a half ago. That is still not a reason to bring it here. It's not, okay? The fact of the matter is that I have yet to hear anything about the metal detectors. Did you ever think about that before you arm our guards with our kids? Is that an idea, to put in metal detectors? Philadelphia has metal detectors. You've yet to hear a shooting over there. That's an idea before you arm guards around our kids? I pose these questions to this panel. Do your kids, are your kids subjected to armed guards where they go to school? Are they? Are they subjected to armed guards? That's the question that, think about, before you arm our kids. Okay? The fact is that we didn't know, and we got this at the last minute. It bothers me as well. Then to hear that you want to do away with the first reading and just implement your decision about kids is just outrageous. You cannot do away with the first reading. These are not your kids. These parents, the residents, the taxpayers of this township has every right to know what you're doing, whatever rules you want to implement, and whatever changes you want to make to these kids. And it is wrong for you to even think of the idea of taking away the first reading. Okay? We, as residents, we have the power to uproot, to vote y'all out of here in November. How about we take away that right? Because I am going to pass this along to the people in my community, and I'm going to make sure they vote, and when they go into this booth to vote, they're going to think about the fact that you did not warn the public of this coming back up again, and the fact that you want to eliminate their right to know. You don't have the right to make a decision for somebody else's child without telling them. Thank you.
Act 67 is a law that was promulgated by the Legislature of Pennsylvania. It allows for certain things to happen. There is no movement on this board, and there's no plan to actually make any changes based upon Act 67. So there is no move to arm anybody at this point, and there is no move to change the situation as it exists right now. So I'm not sure where you're getting the information that you're using.
What was said was in a newspaper article that Mr. Tustin did when all the local school districts were interviewed, will we be making changes? And I said to Kevin at that time, that was already discussed. It may come up again in a policy discussion when we revisit our school's security. But we never said we would. What we said, Mrs. Britis, was, in Clifton Heights, I'll comment here. Let me finish, please.
Hang on, hang on. Wait till you, you're coming up in a minute. Let him finish.
What was stated at a Clifton Heights meeting, Mr. Bly, was this, that if there were problems and concerns with undue hardship or burden on a local community such as Clifton Heights, if we put a middle school there, that we had the opportunity, if we needed to, to work with that local municipality. We could have a school police force. If that helped offset the issues in that community, we would work together or work on writing a grant. However, we could help Clifton Heights, and that's why that conversation came up. We did not go out and say, nor are we saying, that we're going out right now to have armed school security in the school district. That was not at all what the message was that was being sent.
I mean, the last time it was an issue, we voted against it, and we moved on. We didn't, there's no, there's been no motion to resurrect that, so I don't know. Kate Smith.
Kate Smith, 4716 Cedar Lane. I attended the July School Board Committee Meetings, during which the Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation was discussed in relation to crowdfunding, was how it came up, and there seemed to be some confusion and concern about the mission of the foundation and the work that we do. So I am here as a Board Member tonight to provide an informal update from the Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation about a few recent items. Our 2016 grants, number, I'm sorry, 2019 grants. As you may know, Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation grants go through a vetting process by the school district to ensure they align with the school district's comprehensive plan. Once they are approved, funding is released by the foundation. The Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation is pleased to announce that this past May, UDAEF was able to fund every single teacher grant that was applied for and approved by the Upper Darby School District, 17 innovative classroom grants in all. The grant applications came from teachers serving nine of the district's schools and were awarded for projects such as flexible seating, sensory pathways for hallways, a deep equity project, technology purchases for kindergartners to high schoolers, and more. Two, as you may also know, our ability to grant awards within the district has two limiting factors. One, district approval. UDAEF only funds grant applications that the district administration approves. The foundation would love to see even more applications. The application windows open each year in February. If we can demonstrate the effectiveness of our grants with data, we can secure more funding. And that brings us to the second factor, funding. For the past five years, the foundation has been fulfilling its commitment to fund a $265,000 share of the K-2 Literacy Initiative. With the support of the district and community, the foundation has still been able to meet all the approved grants, as well as fund other organizations within the school district, such as the Upper Darby After Prom, and we expect that this work will continue in the 2020 cycle. UDAEF is very fortunate to have a variety of funding mechanisms and funding partners. The foundation is grateful to all the district employees who support the Dollar Pay program, and we thank community members who select the foundation for their United Way contribution. Donor number 4778, in case you were wondering. The UDAEF Foundation is both a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and a state-approved education improvement organization. This means that while all district and foundation cooperative ventures can receive private donations, seven innovative programs are approved by the state to receive grants through the Department of Community and Economic Development's Educational Improvement Tax Credit Program. For example, UDAEF was able to fund a robotics grant via a variety of sources, and the robotics program is also an education improvement organization program. Our executive director is working with the District Director of Curriculum Instruction to finalize the details of how the foundation can disperse a $40,000 DCED grant that was generously directed by a UDHS alum to the AP programs, another EIO-approved program. All EIO district-based programs were, of course, first vetted by the district, and a listing is available on the foundation website, udfoundation.org. We have a Board Foundation Retreat this weekend to prepare for the work of the upcoming year, and someone will be back to present a formal, more formal report soon, and I look forward to seeing the results of the 2019 classroom grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I was originally going to make suggestions regarding the new Policy Committee, but I did want to clarify. You've said at least three times in various meetings that you've had with the Clifton Heights community over the summer, and you've caveated with the fact that it wasn't popular before. You'll see how it goes this time, that you plan on re-presenting the security measures as well as having your own police force that will cite and handle all matters internally. You have, and I'm sure there's video recordings of it. I'd be happy to, so, thank you.
That's all the speakers who signed in. We're going to move to adjournment. Is there a motion? Is there a motion for adjournment of the meeting?
Yes.
All right. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.